Move to for the agenda. Second. Jennifer?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Laverne?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Okay, on the consent agenda, you see the minutes from the June twenty-second and also the June twenty-sixth meeting, any questions or concerns about those issues? Uh, let's see, Laverne, you did bills, everything is all right there?
Fine.
Uh, resignations, you saw those on your list, uh, field trips, I'm assuming we have more field trips this time of the year, and then any items withdrawn from consent agenda?
No.
There are none, so with that, I'll need a motion to approve consent agenda, please.
Move to for the consent agenda.
Second. Dwayne?
Yes.
Laverne?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Okay, on the public forum, Mr. Cordes, you know if anybody in the public forum? Oh, not about that, then we'll move on to donations. We get one donation this month from Jennifer Lynch, she'd like to donate a hundred dollars through the Wells Fargo match against the program. As always, we appreciate every donation to whatever, uh, part of the school it goes to, so if there are any questions about that, I'll need a motion to approve the donation, please.
Move to the approve the donations.
Laverne?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Okay, then moving on to personnel report. Mr. Cordes?
This is the one that's in your, uh, looks like your agenda and in your packet, uh, Sarah Anderson's recommending Denise Hammer, you already want to take these?
Uh, I can't, yeah. Yeah, she is going to be the kitchen manager at Adams Elementary, uh, she'll be replacing Alice Walderman and will be retiring. Sarah's also recommending Lenore Gross, uh, she'll be working two hours per day at Fairview Elementary. And the third one is Edna Oldendall, and she'll be working two and a half hours per day, three days a week, at the Carroll Middle School.
East Drive's recommending Russ Funk to continue in as the freshman softball coach. If approved, he would be on step thirteen and may be paid two thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars.
I just got one comment for Sarah, finding some ladies to work a couple hours a day can be very easy.
No, that's tough.
I mean, that's, you know, we appreciate those, those ladies stepping up to do that.
She was only working three days, it's a five.
There's certain days where it's, um, you need more people to serve, like it's a heavier day to serve, some days are easier to serve depending on what the menu items are.
No.
And so she'll be here only on those heavy days, um, so, but she was happy with that, so, okay. But yeah, that saves us some money when we do stuff like that.
I'll move to, uh, to the curriculum conditions.
Second. Laverne?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to administrative report, the two thousand fourteen fifteen annual progress report.
Sue will be back, uh, she went to a workshop with some teachers today, and she'll be back around five thirty, so she asked if we could move that back a little bit.
That's fine.
Um, and then we can come back to the insurance.
All right, uh, let's move on to the registry, let's see. Okay, review board policies.
The, uh, policy review committee, uh, looked at the one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, and five hundred series this year, um, who felt that, uh, Mary and I did anyway, that Mary could get the one hundred through three hundred series done by this meeting, and then she continues to work on the five hundred series, and so we'll bring you the five hundred series next month. But if you wanted to go through those policies, there were not a lot of what I would call substantial changes, uh, some punctuation here and there, and some word usage here and there, but then, other than that, uh, but we can, uh, you know, spend as much or as little time on those policies as you'd like, if you have questions on individual policies, you can circulate those as well.
Who was on that policy committee? But do you two think we need to go over anything, I mean, you, you two were there, so?
The only thing I saw when I was looking at it today, um, was on, for the one hundred series on page twenty-one to twenty-four, it says, um, it was about the harassment, if harassment doesn't stop, the student does not feel comfortable concerning the harassment, the student should ask a teacher, counselor, or principal to help. Do we need to include the name in that list?
Um. We can, uh, we can, but we have to, I don't think so, because, um, typically what we, a lot of times what we would add is principal or principals designate, and then that's probably what we should add there, uh, because those are duties typically that are, uh, assigned to the, and, uh, but if you put designate, um, in some certain circumstances or incidences, it may not be the name, it may be a counselor, it may be another teacher, uh, so, uh, if you add anything, I would add that the principal's designate. And then we have no problem doing that. What page did you say that was on?
Twenty-one, twenty-two. That was the only thing that I saw.
Is that under, uh?
It's the one.
Investigation procedure?
Yes, yeah.
We'll make a note of it, Mary.
While he's doing that, Dwayne, you have any comments or concerns about?
It was, there was some, just a lot of thought of, like whether they had the name students, it's changed to these, like she, it was just very clear, just finding a few designations on. There wasn't anything major all in that.
It's a whole page actually, because it starts with it, and then it goes on about the.
I got it.
Yep. It's right after the form, is that the one down?
Yes.
Okay, with that changed then, would, uh, we entertain to approve those three series and wait the second reading? Or would you rather wait and do the second reading the next meeting? Still fine with it, Laverne?
There are not that, there wasn't hardly any changes.
Okay, so at least as well, that way we can take care of the next series in, uh, the August meeting, so. Okay, then I'll need a motion with that addition we put in there.
I'll move to approve the hundred series and wait the second reading.
We do all three together, really?
You can.
Yeah.
You can, you can do all three at the same motion.
Um, I have a question on three hundred and forty.
Okay, that's fine.
The evaluation, the superintendent evaluation, since we have the ISP coming to show us the new recommended evaluation process, do we need to do anything with that or leave it alone until next year? It's on page ten of twenty-three.
If it was made, I would leave the policy as it is, and after you receive training from him, if there's something that you want to change, I would not wait till next year, I would change it, be his recommendation or training that you provide.
Have the training, okay. I'll move to approve series one hundred, two hundred, and three hundred and wait the second reading. Oh, and to change the harassment to, uh, page twenty-one of twenty-four and another title to, uh, already out of it.
Yeah, I got it. It's the, uh, procedures, uh, the student to student harassment bullying policy.
Okay, just student to student.
Student, uh, and the investigation procedures.
To?
And.
Include principal designate.
Yeah, second. Kim?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Laverne?
Yes.
Okay, then, uh, board policy code number six twenty-two, private instruction?
A year ago in the legislative session, uh, there were some changes made to private instruction and to, uh, dual enrollment, and these policies reflect those changes. There's really three options anymore that, that, uh, for, for folks that want to homeschool, that they have, they can use a, uh, what was called before, like the language was a common private instruction, to licensed teacher that they're using, um, I'm not sure about the second one, and the third one is the parent that does it themselves, and, and of course, that's not any, under any, uh, guidance of, of anyone, and so, uh, but there are really three different, uh, items that they can do, this policy reflects that, and rather than, uh, this policy was called common private instruction before, because you had to have somebody that oversaw your program, unless you were strictly independent, um, that's no longer the case, and so, uh, if somebody wants to homeschool, they don't have to contact the school at all, we'd like to do, uh, because there is some paperwork that we'd like them to fill out, uh, just so we know that, uh, as far as being required to do so, that they're going to be there. Dual enrollment goes along with that, is that, and it just, it spells it out, the procedure, if they want, they're still eligible for, uh, to enroll in these school programs. Those were, uh, recent revisions from my ISB.
So they wrote this up?
Yes.
Okay. Private instruction, can they do extracurricular activities?
Uh, that, they wouldn't have to be dual enrollment. They're in any program at the school, whether it's athletics, activities, or curriculum programs, they're, they're dual enrolled student. If they're strictly private instruction, the district receives no waiting whatsoever on that, so. But if they're in any program, the district receives some type of waiting.
So then they can do extracurricular?
Only then. Only then.
Okay. Please remember, they can do their own drivers, Edna, too, they don't need to do that. So this, this is pretty well cut and dry.
You can't, you can't have strictly private instruction, say, you know, not to register with the school for anything, and, and then want to participate in a program.
Right.
Yeah, you know, if you're going to be in any, any type of program the district has, then you're falling dual enrollment, you're both homeschooling, you're also, you know, whether it be band, or computer, or whatever the case may be.
So they can't, you're saying they can have private instruction?
But, but, but then they're not, then they don't fall under private instruction entirely, they're under, they fall under dual enrollment.
Okay, what about athletics?
Same thing, so, uh, dual enrollment, they're, they're a dual enrolled student, because they have to be enrolled. A private instruction student does not have to be enrolled.
Right.
That means mom, dad, or somebody that they wish, want to teach their child at home, to do so, and, and have no registration, and no, uh, basically no communication with the district.
So do you want these together?
You can't yet do them together, or just do the same thing.
Laverne, do you have more questions?
No.
I move to approve code number six two-two of the private instruction, and code number six two-three of the dual enrollment.
I'll study. Jennifer?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Laverne?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Well, Mr. Dirks, I don't disagree with you, but you have to remember the Speaker of the House of Representatives of the State of Iowa homeschools and schools. So if you wonder why there was a change?
Yeah.
Maybe you wanted that.
Wow, that's why it weighed so heavy then, didn't it? Pretty easy, I got through with it.
Yeah.
Do they still only have to be in the thirtieth percentile of Iowa with state testing?
Um, they don't test for us.
If they're not tested at all.
Strictly private, now, uh, they can ask for, uh, to have their child tested, but they do not have to take the Iowa assessment.
I thought it was that they, the state, they had to show the portfolio or the state that they were at least in the thirtieth percentile.
Have to make, uh, what's called adequate progress.
Which is a portfolio?
That's not defined. So some of that would depend on where they were the year before, there's no magic cut line, is what I'm saying, for them to have to reach in order to be, in order to meet their, uh, and, and if you're under totally private, I don't think you have testing whatsoever.
We have no control over anything.
We just, just, there, there are a couple of districts that have a very large percent of homeschool children, uh, and they actually run a, uh, they have what we used to have as a, as a homeschool coordinator that works with a lot of those things, I mean, it's, it's a significant, Marion, for example, is, is a, is a district that has a very significant amount of homeschool, uh, most of those fall under common private instruction, so either a parent is certified, or they work with someone that's certified, or they're working with the homeschool coordinator in that district. They're not falling under what I would call the, the private instruction. The, the, the common private instruction, I think is the third one, but I, I'd have to go back and look through all of that to, to verify that, but, uh, it was, it's, it was a big change, it's a big change from two years ago. And I, from my, my personal standpoint, I think it wasn't better, they didn't ask me about the legislation.
Probably did have two students homes, that were homes for the state Iowa assessment in the district, to provide all the ones that possibly could, it's parents' choice.
We ordered the materials, we, they're for parents, but, but they, they've also sent the paperwork and said, hey, hey, we would like to test our children, but they are not required to test them.
Right.
But we, yeah, we have, still have some, I think some still touch base with, with them on occasion.
You know, I've watched that homeschooling for sixteen years, and, you know, we, we grasp our arms around it because, you know, we want to help them out, because we want to be a partner with them, because they did come in and took some classes and did the athletics like Mr. Dirks asked about, but, but Mr. Cordes said, well, a couple of years ago, that thing went the other way on us, and I just.
We, we still, a few kids have come in and taken classes, and, 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 uh, some of the younger kids will, you know, might come from physical education, some might come from music, uh, band, uh, we've had kids come from computer, from computer class before, some of them, you know, as early as, as, uh, four, fifth grade, so it's, it, it just varies amongst families, and that's certainly their prerogative.
And we're definitely here for them, so. Okay, you know what, we'll take care of the registration part of it, and then we'll go back to Sue.
Yep. Uh, registration for next school year will be held on July twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, uh, it will be seven AM to two PM on the twenty-eighth, and, uh, registration will be held at the end of cafeteria at Adams here, uh, there's just a lot of other things going on in the other buildings, and, and with projects, and camps, and, uh, building usage, uh, and we know that cafeteria here is going to be open, and, uh, there's, uh, parking, plenty of parking here, and so, uh, the folks in the office just decided that would be a pretty good spot for, uh, the twenty-ninth, uh, they'll go from two o'clock in the afternoon to two, uh, to seven o'clock in the evening, uh, we hope to hit some folks, uh, before they go to work in the morning, and so, um, that, uh, hopefully in the evening, and so that's why we, uh, we, we have, uh, we mailed out past packets to folks, uh, shortly after the fourth, I want to say the sixth, the sixth of July, uh, we're, we get information in every day, uh, registration materials, checks, et cetera, and so, a lot of people just do it by mail, we used to have two full days of it, and, uh, it was, it was basically, uh, a lot of sitting around for the folks that need the registration, and they said, Rob, you don't need to do that, uh, we actually have so many people doing it by mail, and it's more convenient for them, they can pay their fees online if they so wish, or send the check in, so, so there's just a lot of different ways for them to do it, so, uh, we've cut back the hours, and we do like to have it, uh, a little earlier in the morning, and also like to go into the evening just to, to make sure that folks do have, you know, options, so, uh, that's when they are, and certainly encourage folks to, uh, come out and, and get the students registered during that time, if they can't, alls they need to do is contact the district office, uh, and we will help them, certainly new families, uh, we could help them, um, or they can wait until, uh, August first, and then, uh, all the building will be back open, and, uh, they can register at that time as well, in their, uh, particular building, so.
What about open house, are we waiting till closer Fairview, just in the last?
Open house is scheduled for, uh, August twenty-fifth.
And that's at all sites of the high school?
Uh, the high school doesn't have open house, but they do have freshman orientation. The older students, uh, sophomores, seniors come in and get, pick up schedules earlier than that, and sometimes do schedule changes, and, and to that nature, so, but the twenty-fifth from four forty-five to, I think, seven thirty is, is when open house is slated.
So can we go?
And we're gonna have, whether we're done or not.
I walked in. Yeah.
Same, it, it starts in the morning, they run through a mock schedule.
Is that the, uh, that's the two?
Yeah, they come towards evening.
Evening, running, uh, lunchtime, okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, but, uh, you know, you talk about Fairview, it was down there today, uh, and things are, are progressing quite well, uh, still, you know, certainly a lot of work to do, uh, but they've, uh, they began to put, uh, ceiling pads in, uh, all of the, of the ceiling grids in, and, uh, you know, they've, they've done an accomplishment, absolutely unbelievable amount of work in, in the five, six weeks that we've been out of school, and, uh, there's certainly a lot of work to do there as well, and, uh, I'm just shaking my head every time I'm down there tonight, with the nightmares in the evening, and something.
It'll all come together.
I, I think it'll, um, they, they altered four of the footings for the west side next week, uh, or maybe later this week, and then go to the backside for those footings, so, it's, it's come along very well, and, and certainly Dan Schaefer, who's, who's spearheading that project, has, has, has kept me informed, and kept Jeff informed, probably more so than me, but, um, you know, I just, I, I'm amazed when I go down there to see that the painting is done, uh, so that's good, I think we'll probably get in around, it's about a, a week earlier than what we anticipate, um.
Change yourself?
No, I, um, but, uh, you know, if, if you had, you had put a gun to my head, I said, I would have told you, boy, if we could even get in by the twentieth of August, I'd have been happy, but it, it looks like it's gonna be four.
They're gonna try to start shampooing this coming week.
Right. And we're not, and Jeff and I, because he was down there this morning, we're not a hundred percent sure that we'll, we'll shampoo every room like we have the pads, uh, a lot of that will depend on when they pull the plastic strip off, uh, I would, that's another thing I'd have told you, that, that plastic would have lasted a week, I told you before, and, uh, it's amazing how well that stayed down, and, uh, so, I'm, I'm very happy with the progress that's down there.
It's amazing how quiet it is.
It's unbelievable.
Yeah.
In fact, they were indoors today, they look nice, I really, I really like the color of them.
We'll look at the playgrounds done at Adams and, and they don't have a worry about usually, in front of the building, right?
That play, they were supposed to move into, but I think everything got backlogged, all their projects were backlogged.
They haven't moved, but, footings for that playground, uh, for the preschool playground are, are supposed to go in Wednesday or Thursday, this week, and then, then the bricklayer will come and lay the brick for those pillars, uh, tall pillars, uh, then the company's supposed to come and set the foot, so. Middle school playground equipment is supposed to be shipped August fourth, here around six, so this should be kind of, and they're installing, uh, but it's installed, yeah.
And they're extending out here, right, the park area and the playground?
Yeah, we're having park, but, I don't know, it was supposed to, I told them.
They're just coming in earlier than that.
July, I told them we couldn't have it before July first, I told them, come and go sit in the public chair.
Well, it sounds like things are coming together.
Yeah, please.
Good to hear. All right, Sue, we're gonna back up.
This time, this month, I am, next month it might be different, but.
I guess we're there, any other questions on registration or anything, otherwise we'll go back to Sue, if you want to take away?
Do you, do we have the extra copies?
Yeah, there's back there.
Um, this is set up in pretty much the same format that we've used for the, the last few, several years actually, and, so I'm just gonna leave you some things you heard before, some things, some things we discussed at other board meetings, so I won't dwell on them, but please stop me if you have questions about something that you need clarity about. Going to page one, which is inside the cover, um, you'll see, and we did have, I have, you know, I had to work with a different secretary, we did a great job, and I had Linda Wonder for some of the years, and now got Jeannie Hansen in helping out this year, and you'll see the members of our school improvement team, which are the school improvement advisory we were required to have by the state, on page two, these are our, uh, student learning goals, and I talked to Rob, maybe we need to, we've had these for a long time, and we've come a long way, you know, is this what we still want, so possibly sometime during the year reviewing those, um, board goals would remain the same from, for the past two years, I believe that's what it was told, so we kept those in there, on our district, where our progress toward our six annual improvement goals, and these are based on our long range goals, that, uh, we did meet our reading goal, and that was the first time since, um, two thousand ten and eleven, and just to kind of give you some information on how we do that, just to remind you, you know, we pool all of our third through eleventh grade students who are proficient, um, and then we compare it, so, uh, the last year it was, um, eighty-six point nine percent of all of our students combined in third through eleventh grade were proficient, this year we had eighty-eight point eight percent proficient, which was in place of one point nine percent, so we did achieve that goal, in math, um, you know, we were, our target was the eighty-eight point two or higher, um, and we had, we did not make, or rate eighty-nine point five was the target, and we made eighty-eight point two, so we were one point three percent, uh, down, and in science, our target was ninety-one point seven, and as you can see, our goals are very high for us to meet, but, you know, for us to even make reading is a big step in the district, but, uh, we didn't achieve our science goal, which was, and, so we had eighty-eight point ninety, which was just, you know, eighty-nine percent, you know, so as you get higher in your numbers, you know, it is also hard to achieve, remember this year we had a different social studies goal, and others say, and say, um, all PK through twelve students will achieve high levels in social studies, how do you measure social studies, we went with the goal that was approved by the board, you know, on, uh, volunteerism, and so we used some of the data collected from our tenth grade English and English arts, arts program, and I worked with Becky Base on this, and problem solution, and I'll share information from that, and we did feel like we'd master our goal for social studies, and I would like to see that expand next year to maybe a middle school grade taking on some kind of a, a project that we can, you know, include, and gradually just keep adding to some of our volunteerism, and, and being civic responsibilities, as you know, I mean, that's your role here, and so we'll address some of those issues back, our long range goal for, our fifth long range goal deals with technology, and we use our eighth grade, um, as required by the state, during the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year, we had ninety-eight percent of our students proficient on the eighth grade assessment, and our high was twelve, two thousand twelve thirteen, which was, and, was at ninety-eight point two three, so we were down about minus two tenths of a percent, so we're just very close there, our, uh, goal, our sixth goal is feeling safe and connected to school, and we used our life skills, and I'll share more information as we get into the back, uh, toward the back of our APR here, so you can, um, see in that, new opportunities teaches those life skills classes, I've also included on page five and six, uh, some of our, um, you know, our data points for reading, math, and science, and gave some, um, information on what some of those definitions stand for, so, so moving ahead, let's look at goal one, and that's page seven, and so when we look at it, because I said we did meet our goal for this school year, uh, very pleased about that, in our, as our target gave grades, we looked at ninth or fourth grade, eighth grade and eleventh grade, and you can see I did do a comparison of, um, Carroll versus the state, um, fourth graders were ninety-one point six hundreds percent, um, proficient compared to the state of Iowa at seventy-six percent proficient for this school year, and in the, uh, eighth grade, we had eighty-six point seven three percent of our students proficient as compared to seventy-six percent, also in the state of Iowa for this current school year, and then, um, at eleven- And then, um, at eleventh grade, we have ninety-eight point eight three percent proficient compared to the state of Iowa, eighty percent. And the national, they don't do percentages, and in reality, Iowa assessments, who's our Iowa test of basic skills, or Iowa, Iowa test of educational development, were big, you know, many years ago, and now they're falling off. Not very many states are using our assessments anymore. You know, they have their own state development assessments, so there really isn't good national data to say, you know, uh, compares in our pools, not gonna be that big. Now, I know, um, last month, um, Rob, Diane, or Diane wasn't here, Rob did some of the elementary. I think Cory did the middle school, Tammy did the high school. And I'm not gonna go through all the Iowa assess, test of, um, our Iowa assessment data, but you can see multi-year. Remember that red dotted line was when the new, um, version, the new update came in? So it's, um, not truly apples to apples, but we kind of kept that comparison. Our colors came, I think the colors printed out better this year, what do you think, Rob, on this chart? They did a nice job of getting them-
Well, you can see the outline, good.
Where we had a hard time with that, white was really kind of all there, but this year it looks good, so we've got eight years of data on here. Um, you can tell less than proficient is in the blue, the proficient is, um, yellow, and then that advanced is the white. So you can compare, we do a lot of comparisons when we start working with teacher groups, on just looking at, you know, proficient, advanced proficient particularly. And for each grade level, you'll see gender, male and female, and IEP, non-IEP. And then the fourth page of every grade level, and this is for reading, as through all the other subjects, is socio-economic stats. And so you can kind of do it quick. Is there any, do you want me to go through each of these, because we did, you did address a pay problem, is that all right? Okay, so then, um, if you do have any questions about the Iowa assessments for reading, and we'll, the same format is for math and science. But I'm gonna take you to the assessment for the BAST and IGDS assessment on page forty-four. And keep in mind, we were a phase one school last year, so we were one of only ten, uh, the year, this past year, a year ago. Uh, we were only one of, of ten percent of all the schools allowed to be in this. This happens to be our IGDS data, so when we do, uh, Kemper did join, um, IGDS in, with winter testing this year, but this data does not reflect Kemper. When I reported to the preschool advisory group, I did combine Kemper and Carroll, just because of the advisory group is made up of both, um, school systems there. As you can see too, when you look at last year's data for enrollment in Iowa, spring of two thousand fourteen, you'll see twenty-five hundred students took the assessment. But when you look at spring of two thousand fifteen, you see sixty-five, almost sixty-six hundred students. So the participation rate for IGDS is, um, increased just because it opened up the doors to more schools. So when we look at benchmarks, spring of two thousand fourteen, we had sixty-six point three five percent of our students, um, meeting IGDS benchmark. But this year, we ended up with sixty-eight point eighteen percent of our students, um, proficient in Carroll, with about sixty percent of the state of Iowa being proficient on the IGDS assessment. One thing we've noticed and one thing that teachers really wanna look at is that when they started out in the fall, they were very low, actually lower than the state average, with about twenty-two percent of our students proficient in the fall, with the early benchmarking of IGDS. And then it took a big jump, and then we kind of didn't take this big a jump, and the teachers really wanna reflect on what happened between winter assessments and spring assessment. And keep in mind too, that, um, eighty percent is kind of a bingo, and that means not just eighty percent at the end, but eighty percent, you know, each testing period for, because the bar goes up for each benchmark period for all of our assessments. So keeping in mind that's, um, also keep in mind too, there's no cost for this. We, um, you know, it's just part of the state of Iowa, you can choose to do other assessments. Some would choose the accelerated reader, there's one with them, but they have to pay. So this is included in, this is all free to us, we don't have to pay. Any cost for Kemper or for ourselves to be in this part of the world. Okay, so looking at kindergarten, um, and I'm taking my time to this because this is like a major and I just would, this is, um-
So we have a question, just regards to the definition of a benchmark versus the previous assessment, I guess it's just the rating one.
They do the fall, winter, spring, we're required by state law, you have to, state law, what to do three benchmarks, or they might call it screen, you might have heard of using to a screen.
But speaking of what the proficiency ratings on the assess, uh, assessments, that's, it's just a different, different measure.
Right, each, even though it sounds, looks like they're the same number, they aren't. The number goes up for each testing period. So when I say, um, you know, just looking at kindergarten, you know, if you look at the fall two thousand fourteen, second column, it's over there, second step, you'll see that at the beginning of the year, it was fifty-four point three six five percent proficient, but by the end of the year, they were ninety-four percent proficient. The bar went up and the tests changed for kindergarten and first and preschool as the year progresses. So it's not like apples to apples to apples totally, is that answer your question?
Yeah, just kind of, just clarifying what the, what the definition of a benchmark was.
Yeah, the benchmark is the targets and they're, um, well, IGDS, it would be out of the testing, they have to have, I believe, I can't remember, if it's three out of four tests are, make them a bingo. And kindergarten and first grade, it's composite. So the composite weights, and it isn't like, if there's four subtests, they aren't all twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent. As it's more, provides a better indication of where that student should be during the school year, the weighting of that particular subtest can change. So you don't really know till you get the end result, how many students are doing. And we are required to do this, as I said, by the state of Iowa, three times a year, the, the benchmark, or they may refer to it as the screen, depending on who you're talking to, same test. So if you look at the, at kindergarten, the, last year, just in, in spring, you'll see about fifty-nine hundred, uh, almost six thousand students took it in the state of Iowa. Now it's thirty-six thousand. So you can see the pool changed, it's a lot bigger number, because most, the other ninety percent were slowly got on board. So when you look at our end result for kindergarten in spring of, uh, two thousand fourteen, it was about seventy-one percent of our students made the target in kindergarten. Whereas this year we had ninety-four percent and, um, you know, so that's a great group. I mean, we're seeing progress, but the teachers know the targets and they teach to the targets. And I'm just taking universal instruction class right now, with, um, there are about twelve teachers, I took over six, we're kind of, I'm bouncing back between sessions. But, you know, just being able to target and focus, if you don't know what the targets are and you don't teach those skills, you're probably not going to do as well. But now our kindergarten teachers ask what our other teachers, you know, just a little bit more information, not teaching to the test, but kind of teaching the skills to the test, so the kids can generalize across. And then you see that the state of Iowa, that last column bottom number is about seventy percent. So we were quite a bit higher with our kindergarten program than, um, the state of Iowa. Okay, then looking at first grade, it's also a composite. And keep in mind too, that in the winter is when they do their reading, their actual, we call it curriculum-based measurement, where we measure fluency and accuracy. They do some subtests also, that they really, the, the reading of text, of whole born text, is not until winter of two thousand fifteen, or until the winter test. And you can look at the same numbers, you know, last year to this year, just to see the population in the state of Iowa, our population is pretty close. We came out at seventy-three point ten percent proficient, and the state of Iowa came out at sixty-eight point one four percent proficient, so, um... And to say, I have no idea why the numbers were higher, I do think we're better on our testing the second year than we were on the first two, so, we'll see how that works. The teachers are working very hard, like, as, as we speak, even just thinking about this school year and preparing and getting the kids into, um, tiger time groups, working in small groups in the class, so we're actually preparing PD for that, so. In second grade, I did put, you'll notice some little asterisks at our, at benchmarking Carroll. If you go across, you'll see that meant that they met the eighty percent, which is considered healthy school in, you know, in, by the state. And you can notice that the state is never meeting that eighty percent on this assessment, so they have their concerns too. And you can see that second grade entered eighty percent proficient on the assessment, and this is totally a reading pa, three reading passages they read and they measure. Fluency, accuracy must be a minimum of ni, of ninety-five percent after. And each target goes up, the words from that goal up. Third grade, and you can see the same thing, you see, um, at the end there, I was kind of covering that a little bit, but they were about seventy-eight percent proficient, very close to our eighty. We have pretty big class sizes, because they're the most school districts, so our pool is, you know, works pretty solid in math. And you can see the state of Iowa is still like sixty-three percent proficient.
So you think since we started our preschool program, this has helped round the road?
I think it's, it's, I think this year we're gonna see a big difference, because the teachers really worked hard. That first year they were just totally, the way they taught is entirely di, now, the way we're teaching them now is entirely different. They were doing, you know, the first week is, you know, maybe the first week they did A, they did B, they did C. Now they're realizing we got, they do a lot of rhyming, they do a lot of letter sounds blending. You do see a different instructional program, I would say it's gonna make a big difference. But we, I'm anxious to see what's going to be outside this, this fall. Fourth grade could not participate in BAST last school, school year, because the state said the grade, the buildings that have kindergarteners through third grade. Well, of course, third grade was at Fairview last year, so of course, the fourth grade couldn't test, but when we bumped third grade up here, now fourth grade can test. And the, so, um, yeah, I mean, it gets better as we go on here, but anyway, so they let us test this year, so we went with that. You can see they were about seventy point seven three percent, and I'm just gonna share some more information, but look at the state, fifty-four point, you know, five hundreds percent. And you can see that we were higher, you know, but it was just mind-boggling for the fourth grade teachers. And we do a second assessment that's also by the state, so you're gonna look at the next page. And this is called A reading, and this also is free, and it goes, is part of the package. It's taught a little bit different, it's on computer, and then it, it's similar to our NWA, where they, if they get an answer right, you know, it bumps harder. If they get a, miss an answer, they drop down, so they can do it. When we started doing this, um, in the fall, the technology was horrible, and actually was not good this year, with this A reading, because they set it up. So when one teacher tests a student, they could test, one teacher's on the computer, twenty-five students or twenty-three, whatever, come in and be, and they're tested. When they do A reading, you could have twenty-three or twenty-four students on it, and so when they multiply that, classrooms across the district, across the state, it created, you know, a major problem. So our teachers started, in the spring, started looking at, I'm just gonna bring six kids up to the reading table and do it that way, and it worked much better, and actually to keep them focused, because this is kind of test where, you know, kind of a slam bam, thank you ma'am, I'm done, you know, but the teacher can kind of keep an eye on them and, you know, keep them focused a little bit. In the fall, you can't give A reading, it's not available for kindergarten, so that's why they were not tested this past fall. And then you can see, I'm just gonna show you, because of the computerized version, they got about eighty-three point three three percent compared to the state. And you can see in kindergarten, much higher we vote for the state than what the BAST testing was. We use the BAST testing as our measurement for the state for, for these K through three, and for fourth grade we use A reading, and I'll share those, the rationale behind that. Fourth grade is in a different world, because they aren't, it isn't the early literacy, so our main concern is, um, the K three, um, group. And the state, and we, we just kind of hold fourth grade to the line there, so. Then looking at first grade, we'll just look at those final numbers, and you'll see, um, actually first grade on the A reading came out less. They didn't test in the fall, not because the state, it was open to the state, but the reason we didn't was because we had so many technology problems. We just, I just said, I can't, you know, we can't deal with getting little first graders ready to go and then it doesn't work. So we just kind of said, nope, let's just wait till winter, so they only had two testing times on that. And second grade, you can kind of see where they were, they're a little lower also on the A reading, but they, you remember, that's the group that on the curriculum-based measurement was at eighty percent. So I'm totally not quite there with the A reading, but it's another assessment, it gives us a piece of data that we can use. Third grade, they were in that eighty, even the state came out in the eighty percent for our part there. On third grade, page fifty-three, in the right, like I said, I indicated, asked with an asterisk if they met the eighty.
What does the A reading assess?
It assesses everything, and it, but it's hard like to pinpoint, like, I get a number similar to the standard score. And the thing is, I can't tell whether they were good on phonics, if they were good on comprehension, if they were good on, I can't, I can't do that. But it gives you a piece, it's kind of like saying, like, we were sorting kids into groups who used the CDM or some, you know, or FAST stuff, but this might tell you, well, they can function pretty good, their score, their, their center score, whatever they call it, is higher, so maybe they have more of those skills that they can adapt to reading that we can't handle. But I know Wendy Robinson believes it's like, this test could take the place of NWA for the elementary.
So basically it assesses reading skills where the fast is more of how fast you can read.
Right, how fast and accurate, which also is groundwork, you know, a student that is, can read accurately and read at a certain level is also better able to comprehend. I mean, in reality, if you're going into high school, you have to be able to read accurately, you need to be read, you want to, you need to read accurately, you need to be able, you can't slow motion it through. So it does lay the foundation, there is a correlation between fluent and accurate and would it comprehend, there isn't a, a line with that, a correlation.
I just, when I was teaching, I didn't like the DIBELS, because being fluent and how fast you read are different things. And that's one thing that I had to do with my kids, is slow them down and have them understand that fluency is not just a number. It's how you, your tones change and how you pause and just your reading dialect.
And that, you know that, and that's another thing, we don't want them taking off great plans here. And I think too, the, you know, what we found with this is that the fluency and accuracy, sometimes the team, especially when you get into fourth grade, they notice it more. And this assessment, the BAST measures only fiction, which that's better, because think about when you're reading non-fiction book, you, I, even I read a book, like a professional journal is slower, and if I'm reading a James Patterson book, you know, I can just go through, I'm not gonna be done, you know, it's just, um, the purpose dictates, which I, they found, the state of Iowa and Minnesota, we work with Minnesota, University of Minnesota, believe that the, the fiction is a much better measure of fluency and accuracy. And we, you know what, we have any kids that don't make it on accuracy. Accuracy is pretty strong, you know, is the fluency and, but you know, when you think about it, when you start out in first grade, it kind of duh, 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 duh. So we've gotta get them to kind of smoother readers, is what we have to do. The fourth grade was the one that was kind of a shocker for us, and it's in the state of Iowa, and I'll show you on the little graph on the next page, but they took the A reading and they came out, you know, almost ninety percent. Now remember when they were back on the BAST, well, they were liking with sixty, and we cannot figure out, you know, they can't figure it out either, um, why, what, what's going on, because it's kind of a mess. We were at seventy, almost seventy-one percent on the BAST, but they're on, they're at ninety percent in, on the, um, A reading. And so it's, you know, we're trying to figure that out, but it also is reflected in state data too. Next year we're gonna do fifth and sixth grade, because they will open it up, so we're gonna, they were doing DIBELS next this year, we're throwing that out. I didn't even share the data for DIBELS next, but we only did it one year, I'm really controlled. And so we're gonna do this, so Kim Shields is going to have a new instructional coach, is gonna train all the fifth and sixth grade teachers. And then they will be doing, you know, the curriculum-based measurement, reading the passages, they'll do the A reading, and then they'll also do progress monitoring for those kids who didn't meet target. So they, by this gate, um, K through three students are required to do progress monitoring. If you're not proficient, we call it yellow or red, then we're, we're ready to do progress monitoring weekly. And so our goal is really to give them, so we don't have this student, all the student, you know, we wanna limit the number. The better we become in instruction, the less the trust students are gonna have in that, which might be a problem.
Is this, is this the year that third grade has to be going to reading?
No, it's next year.
Second grades are in top third. And have they told us how they were gonna measure that, what?
Well, they haven't given us all the rules, we're hoping we can, you know, we're doing the summer school, we're doing a lot of things to try to get those. We did with our first grade class, we did three-hour locker reading, this year probably about eighteen to twenty kids, something like that. And we had really good attendance at those schools, so, so we're trying to build some of those things into this. Just on the next page, you'll see page fifty-five, you'll see some charts that I downloaded from the state. It doesn't give you the numbers, but you can kind of tell reflections, so this is percent of students meeting- So this is percent of students meeting benchmark on the BAST, which is the curriculum-based measurement, the reading, um, passages and the A reading. And we didn't do, we didn't have any five-year-olds. So you can kind of see, state of Iowa is on the left. And you can see fourth grade, we've got that dip there, which we can't, that's the state of Iowa. They've got the dip in fourth grade. And then you go over to Fairview and you see, we can compare our four-year-olds with the state four-year-olds. We can compare kindergarten with kindergarten first and second. You can see second grade was pretty high. All of ours are pretty much above in this particular assessment. And then you can say all, for all of Fairview, how do we come out? We came out about, it looks like about eighty percent. And that's, the weakness of this chart is you don't have the numbers sitting there, but you know where that line is, that's eighty, so you're kind of relative to that. And then that last set is Adams Elementary. And it just shows third grade, fourth grade, all. And it's just kind of a comparison. And it's just, gives you an idea, a visual, that's all it does. And then the next page is the A reading. And you can kind of see, if you flip to page, ah, page sixty-six. So you can kind of compare, remember, I mean, you've got your kindergarten at the end there for second, third, and fourth. And then you can see that in Carroll, our fourth grade was up, higher than the state fourth grade. You can kind of see where the all for just that particular assessment. And we're talking about two different assessments, the fast one, the A reading fast. And of course, our preschoolers are not tested on A reading. Remember, that's the computer component. Any questions on the fast? I'm not sure, you know, if this is the best way to, to display the data. But right now, for two years, the data have worked for us this year. And I'm trying, I'll try to think of some way maybe to make it easier. And you can kind of see, we're doing better in most areas than the state. Keep in mind that K three, our main measurement is that CDM, reading the passages, fluency and accuracy. And then fourth grade, we're doing A reading just because the data reflects it. And they would have to add to progress monitor a lot of students. And this is, if they still progress monitor students who are not proficient on A reading, but it's a better assessment and we don't have to, they can be a different assessment.
Are we, are we looking at replacing NWA with A reading?
No, not right now.
Is it a long-range goal?
I don't know. It's, the one thing is if we don't do NWA for reading, we still have to be kind of something for that. So you're kind of, I don't think you, I gotta take, think you gotta take the package with you. But I know one of the AA consultants thought it was better for the lower elementary. Of course, our K one-two students don't take NWA anyway, so. Any other questions about those assessments that are kind of new? I introduced them last year, but this we have some comparison data. The next one, and what this reported, the writing, six plus one writing, Rob, you remember? He gave that this year.
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't have to. And once you have questions about that. And then the NWA that we brought, reported that last month. So we're on, our second goal is math. And if you look on page sixty-two, we didn't mean our goal, but in comparison to the state, fourth grade was eighty-four point eight percent, with the state being seventy-nine percent. In eighth grade, eighty-four point six-nine percent, with the state being seventy-six percent. And then in eleventh grade, ninety-eight point two-one percent, with the state being eighty-four percent. And the math data, you can, if you have any questions about that, we'll skip on to page one hundred.
Sure. The six plus one, uh, is that scored outside of the district or is it scored in the district?
They scored, I think they scored amongst themselves. And we're actually going to, um, we've gone to this training, we're going to actually, though I have, um, Iowa Board doesn't mention six plus one. I mean, those are good, you know, encompass both ends, but we're actually looking at, there are three kinds of writing pieces that, well, the K through four teachers have to, um, for students have to master. And that would be, um, three different, opinion, um, informational, um, okay. The third one, it should be right here in the document. And they're going to do a really saturated, like, everybody, we're going to work as a team, K through four. And the training looks like, um, trying to build more consistency across grade levels. And really decide amongst the building, do we want to start with the informational? Or do we want to start with the opinion? There it is. Or which one do we want to start with? And work as a team on developing those writing skills. And then the next six or nine weeks, we work on the next one. And then we keep working so we can build the writing skills. And actually bringing writing samples in, discussing that, what are the model writing, you know, and those types of things. So I'm glad you asked that question.
Each piece, I think each piece is scored at least twice in math for now.
By different?
By different scores. I think they all get together.
That's true.
But it's not, try to get some.
That's for me.
But I think it's three.
Which makes when I was teaching, because when I could see where I was at, my scores are matched up pretty good with the other instructors, you know, that you're on the same base.
Okay, then, Rob addressed the NWA at the last meeting. And then this is just the math fact. Um, you know, we always get, you know, one of my, first year I came here and I taught second grade and those sixth grade teachers said they don't know the math fact when they get to me. They don't know any of this, kind of kept going. The kindergarten teachers said, well, it's my whole life ball. But, uh, what we've done is we've tried to build some strategies to learn math fact in here. And we're just trying to build that fluency. Does this mean a life or death or anything like that? It's only done five times a year. We don't, I don't encourage time tests during the school year, just on your own. I really, really prefer that we just kind of, do they have the strategies to make tens? Do we have the strategies to, you know, multiplication, strategies to do that? And it's just an extra piece of data, but it just gives us a little information. And you can kind of tell certain grade levels, like third grade this year, you know, they were all above. Um, this is the average correct, average numbers out of a hundred, average problems out of a hundred, correct. And you know, you can also see the trend for that particular grade level. Um, you know, last year's third grade, this year's fourth. And you can kind of do something because they do give the same, all the ad tests are the same. Uh, we have different versions, but at a particular testing period, all the first through fifth grade are getting the same assessments. And we just kind of do that. And we have, like I said, we have five different versions. They're just mixed up and hit the common. But it's just another assessment. And we do, um, third grade, addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division. Other, prior to that, we just do addition, subtraction. And that, I said, that's average out of a hundred. You know, the whole student body for a whole grade level, might have a hundred and fifty students, let's say, about. And this would be the average score, average of all hundred and fifty came to this. So you have your outliers whichever way. And so, like I said, it's not a, it's just a piece of data. And that just kind of lets us know how we can do it. Any questions about math? Okay, then we have science. And in science, the state looks at fifth grade, eighth grade, and eleventh grade. So in science for fifth grade, we have ninety-five point ninety-three percent of our students proficient. While the state of Iowa had eighty-one percent. And here, we had, of our eighth grade, we had ninety-three point eight-eight percent. While the state of Iowa had eighty-three percent. And in eleventh grade, we had ninety-three point seven-five, with the state of Iowa at eighty percent. And then the Iowa assessments, if you have any questions about those. And that, we've looked on through all those before, but it's still going to be up. And we did not meet our goal for science also. So actually, I think, um, of fourth grade, I was kind of, we do a lot of, um, did you want to talk about science all through one hundred and seven? It was very high. We had a very high percentage. And most of our science, amazingly, was taught through our leveled readers that come to our reading series. And so, uh, we're getting more into the STEM. But Iowa assessment still kind of measures those reading assessments, so. And on NWA, page one forty, you'll just look at, they get a RISC score. And we only do five, eight, and eleven in math. It costs extra money for that. That's an add-on test. And so you can kind of see how the, that standard or that RISC score can be. And they did change, we used to, I used to report out two subtests for math, for, for science. And now we just have, um, one test. And that happened last year. Um, the next page you'll see is page, um, one forty-one, and that's the social studies goal. And then I wouldn't, I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, but you know, it just defines a little bit about problem solution. There was feedback from new opportunities for a project that was provided to them. Feedback from New Old Village, feedback from St. John's Lutheran Church, feedback from Adams Elementary. And actually, I had a Freudian slip and put fourth and fifth grade in there. I picked up on that. And I think they did a great job. And I think this is better than taking social studies tests from Iowa assessments and saying we're at the ninety-nine percent. I mean, this is real life, this is, it's doing stuff, and these are projects. Anyway, other people feel bad, but I feel it's better than math maybe. Sometimes we need some of that stuff in the eyes. Any questions about social studies? That's a new one we saw. Okay, then we have technology on page one forty-five, and that's our fifth goal. And we tried to do, you'll see on page one forty-six, that's the eighth grade competencies that are required by the state for technology. And then you can also see, um, we no longer do fourth grade, um, keyboarding. Here, we do fifth grade. The kids, that doesn't mean they don't get technology, they just don't get the keyboarding class. And you can kind of see where we are with that. And as the kids, um, if you look at sixth grade and seventh grade, um, students meeting the minimum, um, competencies for technology, sixth grade and seventh grade, you'll see they're very high, but they're on technology a lot. So that means they get some.
What grade do we take keyboarding in?
We start with fifth grade.
And we work for it?
We work for it.
And that's a semester?
No, this is a.
Six weeks?
Exploratory, yeah. For the fifth, sixth, and seventh. Any other questions about technology? And these are our benchmarks here, so we've got those on pages one forty-seven to one forty-nine. The safety one, this is just a lot of those. Um, we do also do our bully-proofing, but we don't do any data collection on bully-proofing. We have our, we've done surveys in the past with, um, students and adults. We did not do one this year. And as you see in K one-two, we do the positive action. And that's taught by Gary Hutchinson. We do the alcohol awareness unit, Reach for the Stars, is what it's called. They don't call it alcohol awareness, they call it Reach for the Stars. Mr. Rule teaches that in third grade. And Kristy Peters taught it up till last school year. On page, um, one fifty-one, we have kids into not smoking. Um, the results that's taught with new opportunities. Kristy Peters, Carroll High School students come out, work with our fifth grade. Now they go to middle school. The life skills that I reported earlier in the document are taught by new opportunities workers. We don't pay anything for that. That comes as a service to us, uh, from the agency. And you can see that we've got, um, eight sessions of life skills for fourth grade and eight sessions of, uh, life skills for seventh grade. And those are kind of broken down on page one fifty-two. So you can kind of look, just a lot of decision-making, um, and social skills, self-esteem, those sorts of things. And then on page one fifty-five, we've got how we report out the finance for this document. A lot of this through, um, you know, board of directors. We do a lot of that through there. And our philosophy is on this page. And then the one thing, when Linda Wonder left, her computer left and we lost the words, word, work program. So Jeannie didn't have it. So we used to have those diagonal lines that kind of go. You can still follow along by color. And, and Jeannie kind of helped me out here and we tried to go with color. So you can tell, um, this is the average national standard score, uh, for all the grade levels. And you can also follow along, like a student's in first grade, in eleven, twelve, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, and that's the average national standard score based on the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven numbers. And you can look across at seventh grades, a bingo for reading because they kept going up. They went two fifty, two fifty-six, two sixty, two sixty-four. So as the years progressed. I mean, you can kind of, there's a story, but not always is there a story. Sometimes you just try to figure it out. And I did that then for math and science. Uh, we don't give science at Iowa assessment for first and second rates. And like I said, it kind of worked out swift with the diagonals, but we lost the program and the secretary and computer. And they always said, Linda loved that program, but she's the only person, the district manager has the program. So I think they pretty much took it off. Um, page one sixty-four, Iowa, our ACT did. Have you had any report on that?
On ACT?
No, and it just shows, um, I'm just going to do a brief, sixty-eight percent of students took ACT, fifty-three point one percent. And this wouldn't be this class, the class of the two, um, two thousand fifteen and the two thousand fourteen. And you can compare, um, just how our students did meeting benchmark, ACT reading benchmark. And that's just a data, piece of data I've given. Probably the real piece of data is the ones on the next page that probably give you a better picture. Our students' scores compared to, um, you know, the others in the state and national. And, um, so it's Carroll High School, you know, it's a little box, a little circle of Iowa and the triangle of the nation. And you can kind of see where we are for all of those. And it seems like the class of two thousand thirteen must have, they did pretty good there. The one I noticed the most was the math one on page, um, well, page one two. The math, we're about three pages in. And you can see where there's a wide gap even between the state of Iowa and Carroll, but math seems to be one of our stronger areas, if I make a judgment call on it. Science, but always we're above state and we're always above the national. And then the composites on page, um, the last section of that. And as you see, we still show that trend of improvement. It wasn't always that way, as you can see. I mean, you can look back at all these graphs and we were crossing over and crossing over. And now we seem like we're kind of taken off above at least that one. So that's a compliment to the school system. Lastly, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, the board might, uh, wonder why only fifty-three point one percent of the two thousand fourteen seniors took these. Keep in mind that, um, you do not have to take the ACT to get into a community college. If you are to go down and enroll in DMAC, uh, they would give you the compass test. And so we have a number of students, uh, attending DMAC, whether it's here in town or Boone or even the Inc. And they know that in advance. And they just say, we're not going to take the ACT. I'm not going to take it, no, I'm going to go on DMAC, I'm going to go down, I'm going to take the compass. And so they never have to. They can transfer from DMAC on to a region school or any other school, any other four-year school. And they don't have to take the ACT. It's not required after. I see, uh, in the news that, I believe it's Drake, that's going to accept both the ACT and SAT now, which is a little something different. But of the regions, uh, it's ACT.
And this is just, um, senior class? Because you don't have to take this your senior year. It's going to be seniors and.
It's whenever they took the test.
In their, the graduating class?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The graduating class from when they took it, whatever they took it.
Whatever.
A lot of the seniors might have taken it as a junior.
Right.
And may not have ever taken it again. I don't know why anybody would want to punish themselves enough to take it more than once, but. What you do.
Yeah, they are, yeah. And they want to get better with all their scholarships.
And in reality, you know, almost every, every assessment in here is a district-wide. All students take except for the ACT. I mean, I just have that information in there because it's not required. It's not a district-wide assessment. You know, you've heard it, and some other states, they talk about this. And even in Highland, wouldn't we do that in Iowa? Are there some school districts that do this as a?
I don't know if Des Moines ever got that through or not, but they were, they were discussing getting the ACT.
I did go ahead and, um, I'm not sure if the goals were approved. I did have them already in here when I took it on to Johnson to have a copy. But I just took it like, um, the goals, basically, as long as we're doing this assessment, this may not be the way it is, but I don't know where smarter balances. We don't know where this legislation is for the, or the government. We're going to do no child let from time. We're kind of, so we might as well just keep moving. We're kind of, so we might as well just keep moving, my recommendation, and I would guess, you know, and Rob, probably, I'm guessing. You know, just keeping the way we've been doing it for our reading, math, and science. You know, just trying to work to, to one-up the score, even a tenth of a point is growth. And at least maintaining, we don't have a, a big drop. We tend to have maybe little, but so far, we've been pretty much in the ballpark. And we're on, you know, I, I really feel like this school districts is getting better. I, I hope you feel confident in the school district, the principals, the teachers, your parents, students, community, because it's all a team effort. And I think our document reflects, you know, we should be very proud of, you know, what we're doing here in Carroll. But it takes a lot of hard work, it doesn't just happen. And your work too.
I know, I mentioned in one other meeting that my hat's off to everybody because of their hard work. Now, yes, we are a little bit down on a couple of them, but that's only because we're keeping our bar up. We are not lowering it at all. So, I mean, and that's where we wanna be. If we fall just a little bit short, that's why, maybe one or two students, I mean, it's very minimal. It could've went either way, but we're still holding the bar where it needs to be. And, you know, we're never gonna lower it. Because that'd be easy, just lower a couple points and, well.
Well, you know, we came up, that came up, you know, when we changed in the red line here. Do we lower our standard because it's a new assessment? We never did, but guess what? We've managed to keep it up there, you know, even up over the four years. So we've gotta feel really good about some of the decisions we've made.
Absolutely.
You know, hard work and.
And we don't get penalized. It's not like AYP where we don't make it, it's just a goal to shoot for, basically.
Yeah.
And looking at, I was, you know, seeing the improvement in kindergarten. I know they had pretty large class sizes this year, and they did an amazing job, that, all the way to the ACT scores. And, I mean, our teachers are doing an amazing job.
They are, they are, they're great, excellent.